When I started with the company in 2011, one of the first directives I was given was to head west. And so I did exactly that. And honestly, in 2011, I ran right on Turner Parkway into this property. And I thought I was just brilliant. I had found 50 acres in the middle of a city on a freeway. How smart was I? Well, it was about the same time that Costco was daylighting their concerns with their existing store location. And they were initiating efforts to identify relocation spots. Only one or two actually was in the city of Vallejo. The city of Vallejo may not actually realize how close they were to losing their top sales tax producer. The city, and at the time, most notably former councilmember Pippen-Doo, made immediate efforts to engage Costco to maintain their focus and priority and on the Cook property for Costco. Costco was adamly suggested as their top option being in the Cook property. We don't blame Costco. They were growing weary and wondering if development on this property would ever occur. And the ongoing engagement by the city and Ms. Doo and key staff members such as Annette Taylor, who's here today, where is she? There she is. Good job, Annette. Is the primary reason we're here today and why economic development is going to occur on this property. And we here at Lewis commend those efforts in the past and really appreciate the mission that we are now executing upon that you all set forth long before our arrival. And even with a strong suitor in Costco, there were many failed attempts to purchase this property over the next five years because developers did not share the vision of the city for economic development on this property. And in turn, we finally struck a deal in 2016, and that's where our saga begins. Meanwhile, city had been working on Propel Vallejo, their general plan update for 2040 with the leadership of former mayor Bob Simpian, who hurt his back, couldn't be here today. In August 29, 2017, the city council unanimously supported the general plan update with votes from Simpian, McConnell, Verder, Liga, Doo, Meesner, Sunga, and Malgato paving the way for this project. Thank you to all staff and council in 2017 for leading the way. It's those important decisions from the past that lead our way to the future. And to former Mayor Simpian, who taught me that potential was a bad word, I'm very happy to turn potential into reality for him today. Our next step was to apply for land use entitlements, conforming with the updated general plan, of course. However, our applications were not met with the excitement that the city at the time. The city was going through severe turnover at all levels, at the staff levels. I did not bring my Stop City Turnover t-shirt. I could still sport that, though. Nonetheless, we're excited that the city is making every effort and initiative to recruit and maintain a talented workforce. I would like to first thank all the former and current city staff members that have worked on this project. There are literally too many to name, but all played an important role. There is one particular staff member that definitely stands out to me. In 2019, we were still desperate to advance our project entitlements, but were simply not getting traction and interest at all levels of city staff. In October of 2019, things changed. Another new team member, here we go, as the truck rolls behind me. I was tendibly encouraged with a quote that this person gave to the Vallejo Times Herald. "I look forward to serving as Vallejo's Planning and Development Services Director and engaging with the community on many exciting opportunities on the city's horizon. I have always been passionate about bringing stakeholders together and balancing different viewpoints, and I plan to bring that same passion to my work in the Vallejo community." As most of you know, this person is Assistant City Manager Gillian Han. And I never get her name right. I'll start with Hayes. Gillian, where are you? Gillian, I've never worked with a better staff person in my entire career. You have my utmost professional and personal respect for you as a person and a public official. You so honorably faced and fought and overcame cancer with the same passion you bring to work every day and are to be commended for such. We are here today because of the leadership role you brought to the city, and you certainly have exceeded the expectations from that 2019 quote. And a special thank you for your commanding leadership and as a person of action to help us all realize our common goals for economic development housing on this property. Congratulations, Gillian. This is a success of yours. Gillian, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to have you come up and say a few great words about the project. I can sell your energy as to do such.
Gosh, this is a really emotional moment. This is a celebration for the city, for this community that they so deserve. I'm really glad we didn't do the groundbreaking when nothing was happening and we just turned a little dirt over. I'm glad we did it now because we can actually see dirt. This is amazing, you guys. Thank you for being here. Thank you to the Lewis team. Thank you to the city staff that has so tirelessly worked on this project. You know, a lot of times we hear a lot of negativity in the news, a lot of negativity about the city of Vallejo, but we are doing great things like this. We are doing great things here. And we're going to continue to keep doing great things for the people that live here. This is going to be a great project. 178 or more residential units and a huge retailer, a retail center, right where everyone can see it. This is what Vallejo's doing. We're moving forward, and I am so happy and blessed and thankful to be a part of this and having a wonderful supportive council to help us move these important economic development projects forward. Here's one big one, but there's lots more to come. So thank you for your support. Take care.
Well done, Gillian. Thank you, Gillian. Okay, back to our story since everyone's all comfortable. So now with staff leadership in place and our project entitlements ripe and ready to go, we proudly presented our project to city council June 2020 with all Ts crossed and Is dotted. I was ready with yet another unsurprisingly long presentation, does that starting to make sense here, to deliver to city council, but was cut off three minutes into my presentation by former Mayor Simpian. It was public comment, but come on, mayor. He had heard it all before many times. I got it. We all, it all worked out, of course, as well. We are honored with the unanimous approval of our project entitlements led again by Mayor Simpian, McConnell, Verder, Liga, Doo, Meesner, Brown, and Sunga. We weren't done yet as we still need to forge our private, public-private partnership to ensure the viability of the project, which again received...
This one right there.
Okay. Hi. Looks like we're five after. We're still missing Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Jones. But do you want to wait a few more minutes and think that they may attend? Or would you like to get started? Pleasure of all of you. Okay. We will do so then. So we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And we will now move on to the roll call. Commissioner Clark is absent. Commissioner Hybels. Commissioner Sykes.
Present.
Commissioner Roy.
Present.
Commissioner Lewis.
Present.
Commissioner Yun.
Present.
And Commissioner Jones appears to be absent at present. All right. Moving on. We have, this is actually a special meeting, so, well, it says it's a regular meeting, but it isn't. It's a special meeting, but that's all right. We do not have any calendar items before us this evening, nor do we have any reports from the secretary, since we don't have one. The council liaison is, does not appear to be present this evening. So we will move on to our item number 10, which is a workshop, as you know. And this is a training that will be conducted by our outside trainer, who will introduce himself in one moment. But this is training regarding constitutional due process, administrative hearings as they apply to police officers, Public Safety Officers' Procedural Bill of Rights Act, and confidentiality of police officer personnel records. And so with that, if you'd like to introduce yourself and give a little background, that'd be awesome.
Sir, I am...
Mike.
I'm sorry, you gotta press the speaker button right there. There we go. Do you have to hold it? Just press it. There we go. Okay. Hi, I am Doug Rople. Like Josh Kinetz last week, I'm with Littler Mendelson, an international law firm that specializes in labor and employment. And I have, in my background, represented police agencies and fire agencies in disciplining police officers and firefighters. And I've also been involved in independent investigations of police officers, including chiefs of police. Pull up my slides. Am I already ready to go right into it? Okay, great. And there we go. So tonight we'll be covering three major topics. It's principles of due process. It's just a conceptual topic. And we'll talk about the Public Safety Officers' Procedural Bill of Rights Act, which is short, the POBAR. And then we'll talk about the confidentiality of police officer personnel files. Did you turn on the flicker? I did. I've got the green light. Oh, there, I got it. Had it backwards. So principles of due process. Due process is a constitutional right to all people subject to the jurisdiction of the United States. The constitutional due process we're talking about tonight arises from the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments to the Constitution. And the Fifth Amendment says that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. So tonight, we're going to talk about two of those interests. And the due process rights apply to the government. And in this case, it would be the public employer that employs the police officers. And it precludes the government from depriving citizens of certain interests without due process. So the two interests are property and liberty. We're not talking about taking anybody's life. So what is a property interest? A person may possess a protected property interest in public employment if contractual or statutory provisions guarantee continued employment absent sufficient cause for discharge. And that comes from a Supreme Court case, Board of Regents versus Roth from 1972. There must be a legitimate claim of entitlement to a property interest in employment with a public agency. This can arise from A, statutory rights or statutory provisions, that's state law, or local ordinance requirements, or it could come from contractual obligations. So let's talk more about defining a property interest and where you find it. Contractual obligations creating a property interest can stem from collective bargaining agreements. My colleague Josh went over those with you last week. In the context of union-represented employees or for unrepresented employees through the employer's policies, such as requiring terminations be based on just cause, or language of individual employment contracts. So if an employee's offer letter says you will serve in this position for two years absent removal for just cause, that confers a property interest in that public employment. Contractual obligations can also be implied. An example would be where an employer gave notice in a hearing before terminating employees to other employees in the past. If it set up that practice, then that can be an implied contractual obligation to any other employees, that they will only be terminated for just cause. Truly at-will employees do not have a recognized property interest in their public employment. So the property interest is basically akin to a guarantee that you will remain in your position unless you mess up. But a liberty interest is different. A liberty interest, as guaranteed by the Fourteenth Amendment, denotes the right of the individual to engage in the common occupations of life and to enjoy privileges recognized as essential to the orderly pursuit of happiness. That's also from that Supreme Court case from 1972. So what does that mean? A liberty interest is therefore implicated, and a name-clearing hearing is required where an employer creates and disseminates a false and defamatory impression about an employee in connection with the employee's termination. So this is from a federal case in the Second Circuit in 1983 called Goetz versus Windsor Central. And Goetz was, involved a school janitor who was fired for theft. He was a probationary employee. He was at-will. He didn't have a property interest in his employment. They could fire him for any reason at all. But he did have a liberty interest, and the court ruled that he was entitled to a hearing to tell his side of his story in an effort to clear his name because he'd been accused of theft. Employment cases involving only liberty interests are pretty rare. Usually, it's going to be both a property interest and a liberty interest because the just cause requirement under the property interest generally will implicate some sort of wrongdoing on the part of the employee, which would then raise a liberty interest in clearing the employee's name, having the opportunity to say, "I didn't do it," or "It didn't happen this way," or "There was mitigating circumstances." So there's two core due process components. Advanced notice of the disciplinary action, and we're going to talk in terms of disciplinary actions because that's really what's at issue here. There are other aspects of due process, but we'll focus on disciplinary actions. So it's advanced notice of the disciplinary action, along with the reasons and supporting evidence. And then there's also the opportunity to be heard, which is just a hearing on the matter. For the opportunity to be heard, where procedural due process guarantees apply, a determination of the form of hearing required involves a weighing or balancing process concerning the particular interests involved. The hearing can range from an opportunity to provide just a written explanation, or it can also be an informal meeting, or it could be a full evidentiary hearing with sworn testimony like a trial. And that's generally what the arbitrations that we'll be talking about later are essentially like a trial. The hearing may need to be held before the employer takes action. It may need to be take, the hearing may need to be held after the action, or it may be both. And you'll see later on, when we talk about the procedures employed here, it is a little bit of both. But what's, what's important is that the determination of how much due process, the form and timing of the due process generally requires consideration of three factors. One is the private interest that will be affected by the official action. When we're talking about police officers, that's a pretty significant private interest, which is their ability to be police officers, A, at the city of Vallejo, but B, potentially anywhere else, right? If they're accused of misconduct, not only is their employment here in Vallejo in jeopardy, but also anywhere else that they try to be a police officer and engage in that occupation. So that's their private interest. The second consideration is the risk of an erroneous deprivation of the interest through the procedures used and the probable value, if any, of additional or substitute procedural safeguards. So what kind of procedures to make sure that the action being taken to deprive the person of their property, right, their employment, their potential ability to be a police officer forever? What procedures should be employed to make sure that there is a justified reason to take the action? That's the second component. And third is the government's interest, including the function involved or the fiscal and administrative burdens that the additional or substitute procedural requirement would entail. So conceivably, somebody could, you know, want, or there could be a conceptual justification for almost endless due process, but at some point, it has to end, right? And one, the action needs to happen, but two, there's limited budgets. You can't, you know, have triple arbitrations and things, it'll just get too costly. So those are the three considerations. So what does due process look like here at Vallejo PD? One, it is established by the collective bargain agreement, the MOU, which Josh covered to some extent with you last week, the MOU, the contract with the Police Officers Association. The property interest also derives from the city's service, Civil Service Commission rules and regulations, which we'll talk about in a moment. And also, there's a due process, a property interest that is conveyed by the POBAR. Under the MOU and the Civil Service Commission rules, probationary officers are at-will. So no due process in the context of a property interest, rights are conferred to them through the MOU or the Civil Service rules. And that means lateral hires with a PO certificate in their first 12 months, or all other new officers in their first 18 months. However, probationary officers do receive most of the POBAR's statutory due process protections, and we'll talk about those shortly. So for permanent status officers, the property interest is provided by the Civil Service Commission Rules, Rule 18.1. That sets out the type of misconduct that is, that is required to be proven in order to take a disciplinary action against a police officer. Then the MOU, Section 32J5, lists that there is a just cause standard for discipline. So that ties into Rule 18.1. You can think of Rule 18.1 as the definition of just cause for purposes of the MOU. And then there's the POBAR's protections. So the administrative procedures here in, at Vallejo PD, there's two primary components. There's going to be pre-decisional due process, so that's the notice and opportunity to be heard component of due process. And then there's the post-decisional due process, which is the appeals process. So the pre-decisional due process that is afforded to officers starts, once a complaint comes in from whatever the source is, the public, from another officer, the first part of the due process is the Internal Affairs investigation. That can be conducted by internal affairs or by an outside investigator, depending on the nature of the alleged misconduct. Your run-of-the-mill misconduct allegation will probably be taken and conducted by an Internal Affairs officer from the department. But in my experience, I've had to be the outside investigator in instances where, say, the chief of police was accused of using racially derogatory remarks with a minority officer, right? Due to the sensitivity of that investigation, the chief of police is the one being investigated, it really would put the Internal Affairs officer in a very precarious position to be investigating his chief of police. So that's when the city will go outside and get an outside investigator, if anything, for the appearance of independence. The officer is provided with a notice of proposed discipline stating the discipline to be imposed and the grounds, okay? So that's generally going to be, not only, it would be, here's the violation of department policy, here are the, here's the conduct that you're accused of engaging in that violated the policy, and here's the evidence that we have to prove you committed that violation. That's all laid out for the officer in the notice of proposed discipline. No discipline has been taken yet. It's just being proposed. The officer then has five days to request a SCELI hearing. A SCELI hearing is an informal meeting where the officer is given an opportunity to respond to the charges and attempt to convince the agency not to impose the proposed discipline or to reduce its severity based on extenuating circumstances. So what this, in practice, what this allows for is the Internal Affairs investigation report is turned over to the chief of police. The chief of police decides what discipline to impose, proposes that, then the officer has a chance to say his part. Of course, almost always, the officer's going to have that chance in the investigation. Typically, the investigations include having an interview with the officer. But maybe something comes up after that. Whatever it is, if the officer gives a good reason to reconsider the discipline, before the discipline is imposed, is a great time for the police department to actually, you know, change course before you go down the appeals road, because that's where it gets expensive and lots of bad things can happen if it's done wrong. So it's just an opportunity, these SCELI hearings are an opportunity for the officer to say, hey, you know, either you didn't consider this, or there's this additional extenuating circumstance, you should reconsider the discipline being proposed before we go down appeal road. Once the SCELI hearing is held, and it's currently being held by someone not employed by Vallejo PD, is my understanding, there's a recommendation to the SCELI, by the SCELI officer, that's given to the chief. And then the chief has the decision to impose the discipline or not. And then the officer is given a notice of discipline, which states, again, that the discipline to be imposed and the timing. So the discipline to be imposed may be the same that was proposed before the SCELI hearing, or it might have been altered. It might have been changed based on how the SCELI hearing went. But the notice of discipline will state what discipline is going to be imposed and when. And typically, it will also address whatever points the officer raised in the SCELI hearing, right? Just to make sure that that's in the record, to show that the chief of police or whoever the SCELI officer was and the decision-maker, that they took the officer's statements into account, whatever he brought up in the SCELI hearing. So now let's talk about the post-decisional due process. And this is set out in the MOU in Section 32J and the Civil Service Commission Rules and Regulations, Rule 18. So these procedures apply to suspensions, loss of pay, and terminations. There's a different procedure used for just a written reprimand, and that's typically due to the fact that the reprimand doesn't carry any tangible, any tangible loss of a property interest to the officer. He's not losing pay. It's not as serious as a suspension, and it's certainly not as serious as a termination. So there's a slightly different due process requirement for something like a written reprimand. But regardless of what procedure is used, the officer has five days after the receipt of the notice of discipline to file a formal request for appeal. And then the officer has two appeal options. The first appeal option is to appeal the decision to the Civil Service Commission. The Civil Service Commission holds an evidentiary hearing, so this is getting into like the trial-like setting, right? It can hear evidence. The officer has a chance to cross-examine his witnesses, confront his accusers, so to speak. The Civil Service Commission issues binding findings and conclusions. They either affirm, reverse, or modify the disciplinary action. The hearing is a closed session unless the officer requests a public hearing. The second appeal... The second appeal avenue for the officer is an arbitrator or an arbitration. It's before a neutral arbitrator that is selected by agreement between the city and the Police Officers Association. If no agreement is reached, there's a strike-off procedure that is used, and they get a list of potential arbitrators from the California Department of Industrial Relations, Mediation and Conciliation Service. So it's somebody who's supposed to be trained in being an arbitrator, it's not just somebody off the street. The arbitrator's jurisdiction is limited to determining if the disciplinary action is for just cause. That is all that that arbitration is about, it is not to get into collateral matters. Arbitrators may reverse, modify, or uphold the disciplinary action, and the decision of the arbitrator shall be final and binding. It's a double-edged sword. One, if the arbitrator finds in favor of the city and that the discipline was justified, that's the end of the line as far as that decision is concerned. We'll get into some collateral attacks on that through the POBAR here shortly. But the other edge of that sword is if the arbitrator rules in favor of the police officer, there's not much that the city can do about it, and that's going to be the end of the story. And I've seen cases where that is, that happens, where we went into arbitration on a disciplinary action against a police officer. Even the police officer's lawyer thought things were going so bad that he paused the arbitration and contrived a family emergency so that we could try and settle the case outside of the arbitration. The city didn't want to settle because things were going so well and they felt so strong about the case to begin with. We didn't settle, we came back, and then we still lost. I mean, I've never seen anything quite like it, but stuff happens. Arbitrators are people. Sometimes they make good decisions, sometimes they make bad decisions. But whatever decision they make, for the most part, it's binding. So whichever type of appeal is the officer's choice, but the officer only gets one appeal and cannot do both. So the officer doesn't get to go down the Civil Service Commission appeal and an arbitrator, it's one or the other. And then even after that, I did say that in both cases, it's a final decision, right? The Service Commission or the arbitrator, final decision. There is still a judicial appeal right, and by judicial appeal, we're talking about the courts. But the decision by the Civil Service Commission is appealable to judicial review under an abusive discretion standard, which is a deferential standard to the commission. It's not ironclad, but they're, just think of it, that there has to, they have to show, the officer would have to show that the commission completely abused this discretion. For the arbitrator, the decision is subject to even more limited judicial review, and you basically have to show that somehow the result of the arbitration was corrupted, that the arbitrator wasn't neutral, he was paid off, there was, it's a very, very difficult standard. So we mentioned that there was a different set of due process when it comes to written reprimands, so you don't get all those appeal processes. Upon the receipt of a written reprimand, so this is after the discipline has already been imposed, the officer has 10 days to submit written notice of appeal. The chief of police designates a neutral third party. Typically, it's going, or in this case, it's going to be a management-level personnel within the department. If the officer objects to the designee, then the human resources director shall serve as a third-party neutral. So this is all out of the memorandum of understanding with the union, it's Section 42. Then there's an informal appeal hearing, it's essentially a SCELI hearing, held within 10 days of the notice of appeal. That deadline can be waived by both parties. The neutral can sustain, reverse, or modify the written reprimand, and the decision is final and not subject to any further administrative reviews. So we're going to move on to the Public Safety Officer Bill of Procedural Rights that we'll be calling POBAR. It was codified in Government's Code Sections 3300 through 3313. It provides a basic procedural rights and protections to all public safety officers when subject to investigation or discipline by the employing agency. California's POBAR was enacted in 1976, and there are numerous states that have laws providing special rights for peace officers. Its purpose has been summarized by the California Courts as effective law enforcement depends upon the maintenance of stable relations between public safety employees and their employers. The POBAR's protections are deemed to benefit the public in general by encouraging peace officers' cooperation in investigations of possible wrongdoing. So one thing to keep in mind is this is a procedural bill of rights, it's not a substantive bill of rights. This doesn't change the just cause standard for officer discipline. It doesn't change the fact that an arbitrator's decision is final so long as the procedural safeguards, the procedural protections that the POBAR lays out were followed. It is just a procedural law. And the rationale for it really is, police officer, you know, law enforcement work is a dynamic occupation, that peace officers are, you know, subject to dynamic situations where that could lead to a complaint by a member of the public. Sometimes those complaints are justified, sometimes they're not, because police officers are dealing with people in ways that people don't want to be dealt with when they're being charged with crimes or things like that. So these protections were put in place, you know, to protect police officers and to give them the due process, primarily to make sure whatever actions are being taken against a police officer are justified. And that's something that's needed to actually be able to recruit officers into the occupation. So the POBAR provides peace officers with the ability to immediately pursue an action in the California Superior Courts and seek a remedy for a violation of the rights provided in the POBAR without having to wait to exhaust all of the administrative process that we just talked about and/or seek a judicial review of the final decision. So what that means in a practical sense is, while the peace officer discipline is going through the administrative due process that we just talked about, so either we're at the notice of proposed discipline, but the discipline hasn't even been proposed, has not been imposed yet, or a disciplinary decision has been made and now we're in the appeal process, if at any point during the administrative process, the police officer feels that there is a violation of the POBAR that is significant enough that he thinks it will change the outcome if he challenges the process, he can go straight to a superior court and say, my rights under the POBAR were violated, I need you to get involved now, and we'll talk about the remedies, right? So what that court could do is provide injunctive relief, and here's the purpose of it, right? To remedy the violation and prevent future violations of a like or similar nature, including restraining orders prohibiting the agency from taking any punitive action against the police officer. So it's all going to be situational, dependent, what's the egregiousness of the violation, what's the prejudice to the officer's rights, particularly in that disciplinary process? But it could very well lead to the superior court saying, city, you cannot discipline this officer. No matter how righteous the discipline was, if you violate one of these procedural protections, you're done. It's kind of akin to the Miranda rights situation, right? If you, if the police officer arrests somebody and starts interrogating them without their Miranda rights and gets a coerced confession, even though you've got the confession, the person did it, you violated that person's constitutional rights, they go free. You can't use, you can't use their coerced confession. The court can impose civil penalties of up to $25,000 that gets awarded to the officer, and that's for each violation. And a lot of times, a POBAR challenge will allege 13, 15 violations of the POBAR, and each one of those can carry that civil penalty. The court can award actual damages suffered by the officer, so that could be an injunctive relief, would be reinstatement, and then actual damages would be all the back pay for the time period that that officer was off work. And then the court can also award the fees and costs incurred by the police officer's attorney, which could be substantial. So when does the POBAR apply? It applies when the peace officer employee is subject of an investigation and subjected to interrogation that could lead to punitive action. It doesn't have to necessarily lead to punitive action, just needs to be that it could lead to punitive action, which generally means anytime somebody in management at the police department is talking to an officer, it's an interview, you know, the safe and cautious approach is to consider it an interrogation to which the POBAR protections apply, and we'll get into what those protections are. A punitive action means any action that may lead to dismissal, demotion, suspension, reduction in salary, written reprimand, or what's important here, a transfer for purposes of punishment. So not all transfers are going to be something that triggers the POBAR, it's only if it's a transfer for the purposes of punishment. The POBAR's definition of a punitive action may be broader than the definition of discipline under local civil service rules, so it's one thing to also keep in mind. When does it not apply? The POBAR does not apply to criminal investigations, when it's solely and directly a criminal investigation and that's it. And it does not govern interactions in the normal course of duty or other routine contact with the supervisor. So not every time a supervisor talks to his subordinate officer is it triggering POBAR protections, it's not always an interrogation. But like I said, an interview that could result in the information obtained being used in a punitive action is an interrogation. So for instance, in the times that I've been an independent investigator, investigating a situation, even when I'm interacting with who I think of primarily as just a fact witness, it's just somebody who was there, saw something, has some information that I want. The fact that they could say that they witnessed something and then didn't report it, which could then lead to a disciplinary situation, I take the cautious approach, I consider the interview, a witness interview, and any sort of investigation that I'm doing, whether I'm dealing with a peace officer witness, I just treat it as an interrogation for purposes of the POBAR, we take all those procedural precautions, and then I know I'm good, no matter what. So now we're getting into the actual protections of the POBAR. Interrogations are one of the core protections or core areas of protections, and they dictate when can an interrogation occur. It has to occur at a reasonable hour, preferably at a time when the officer is on duty or during the officer's normal waking hours, right? So if it's an officer that's on night shifts and is usually up at night, you're going to probably want to do that interrogation at night, even if it's his day off. Now, of course, this is all unless the seriousness of the investigation requires otherwise. If it's exigent circumstances, we need to get the interview done, stat, you do it, right? But the seriousness of the investigation has to warrant that. And if the interrogation occurs while the officer is off duty, he must, he or she must be compensated. Here's another protection. The officer needs to be given advance notice of who will be interrogating, including the name and rank of who is in charge of the investigation, who will be present during the investigation, so who else will be in the room, and the nature of the investigation. So there's just no surprise in the officer, hey, come into this, come in, come in here, I'm going to talk to you real quick, and then you start peppering him with interrogation questions. He gets advance notice of all this. Limitations on interrogations. There can only be two interrogators at a time, so you can't bring an officer into a room with five interrogators, all five of whom are peppering the officer with questions, and it's just, questions coming from the left, coming from the right, it's just to keep the officer from being overwhelmed and getting, you know, coerced information. The interrogation needs to be of reasonable duration, considering the gravity and complexity of the issues being investigated, so an eight-hour interrogation over a minor policy violation is probably not going to be warranted. And the officer must be allowed to attend to his or her physical necessities, which would be bathroom breaks, food, water, so no starving the officer until he gives you, you know, answers to your questions. Some more limitations. The officer cannot be subjected to offensive language or threats of punitive action, except he can be informed that not answering questions could result in discipline, and there could be no promises of reward to induce answers to questions, right? So this is just establishing kind of a fairness in the interrogation process. Recording. An officer has the right to record the entire interrogation if he or she wants. If the employer records it, the officer must be given access to the recording prior to any further proceedings or any subsequent interrogation. So if the interrogation gets bifurcated into an initial interview and then a follow-up interview, if the initial interview is recorded, the officer has a right to the recording before the next interview occurs. The officer has a right to representation. At the officer's request, the officer is entitled to have a representative of his or her choice present for the entire interrogation, and communications with the representative, the communication between the officer and his or her representative is treated as privileged, except in a subsequent criminal matter if the representative is not a lawyer. So if the officer's chosen representative is another officer in the department who is not subject to the investigation, the communications between the officer and that other officer as the representative are treated as privileged for purposes of the administrative proceedings. But if that officer is later prosecuted criminally, that's not going to be a privileged conversation because that other officer wasn't an attorney. A couple other, kind of more obscure protections is that the employer cannot create negative press as leverage. So in the course of the investigation, the city or the police agency can't start leaking things to the press or start doing things in the public to try and ratchet up pressure on the officer to submit to an interview. And so there's the specific language, the employer shall not cause the public safety officer under interrogation to be subject to visits by the press or news media without the officer's consent, or have his or her home or photograph be given to the press or news media without consent. And during interrogations, the officer must be read Miranda rights immediately, once it is deemed that the officer may be charged with a crime. So the investigation starts off as just a disciplinary action in the course of the investigation, including the interrogation with the officer, the light bulb, that this is going to maybe go into a criminal arena, that light bulb goes off, the officer must be read his Miranda rights so that he can invoke his constitutional right to remain silent if that's applicable. If the officer invokes his right to remain silent, the officer can be given what's called a libargar warning and can be ordered to answer, but the officer's answers cannot be used against him or her in a subsequent criminal proceeding, right? The officer can be disciplined for refusing to answer after being given the libargar warning. So an officer who invokes his right to remain silent because he thinks he could incriminate himself by speaking can be disciplined for remaining silent. But if after, if the libargar warning is given and the officer answers the questions, whatever comes out of his mouth then cannot be used against him in the subsequent criminal prosecution. So that's a very tricky situation, that's going to be something that's going to require a lot of discretion by the investigating officer and the agency to figure out, how do we want to navigate that, because there's implications going both ways. And the interrogation requirements of the POBAR are incorporated into Section 41 of the MOU, that's the Internal Affairs interviews. One last thing is that police officers cannot be compelled to submit to a lie detector test. So another core area of protections for officers under the POBAR is a timeline for investigations and the notice of proposed discipline that we talked about before. Remember, there's a notice of proposed discipline, then the SCELI, and then a notice of discipline that's going to be imposed. For purposes of the POBAR, it's the notice of proposed discipline that we're focusing on here. There's a one-year, we'll call it a statute of limitations. There's a one-year time limit on the investigation being completed, and that starts to accrue upon the discovery of the misconduct by a person authorized to initiate an investigation of the alleged misconduct. So if an officer's coworker knows the officer engaged in some misconduct, but that coworker doesn't have the authority to initiate an investigation in and of themselves, that's not triggering the timeframe. But if a corporal, a sergeant, a lieutenant, somebody else knows of the conduct and fails to initiate the investigation and complete it within the one year, then it's, then you're done, it's over. And ignorance of who the officer is that committed whatever misconduct. So there's a question, as we know some misconduct happened, it's a question of which officer did it. Ignorance of the identity of the officer that committed it does not toll this one year. You've got a year to figure it all out, once the conduct is discovered. The officer must also be given a formal letter of intent or notice of adverse action. The officer must also be given a formal letter of intent or notice of adverse action, which is another word for the notice of proposed discipline, articulating the discipline within that one-year period. And this is all found in Government Code Section 3304. The notice of proposed discipline usually articulates the ground for the discipline, and that's the policies violated, the conduct that violated the policies, the facts and evidence establishing the violations and the supporting discipline. And one area where this matters is, things take time. And a lot of times, departments find themselves up against this timeframe, but you can't cut corners and just issue out a notice of proposed discipline that leaves off some of these things, because then you're gonna open yourself up to a deficient notice of proposed discipline that is not giving the officer the ability to properly state his case at a SCELI hearing because he doesn't know what the facts, what the evidence are supporting the discipline, right? There are exceptions to the one-year rule. It's told, which is another word for paused. If the alleged misconduct is also the subject of a criminal investigation or prosecution where the officer is a criminal defendant, or the investigation is in response to a complaint against the officer from a criminal defendant during that defendant's prosecution. So the example being, Gary Smith is being prosecuted for crime X, and as part of his defense, he says the officer engaged in misconduct, and that's a defense, the officer planted evidence, or something like that. During the pendency of that criminal prosecution of defendant Gary Smith, the one-year statute of limitations against the officer is paused. It's also paused if the alleged misconduct is the subject of a civil lawsuit and the officer is a named defendant. So if Gary Smith is suing the department and the officer for violations of his constitutional rights, either stemming from that criminal prosecution or otherwise, that pauses the one-year statute of limitations. That's just to keep the specter of the criminal prosecution of the civil lawsuit and the ramifications of that from interfering with the ability to actually engage in an effective investigation on the administrative side. And of course, the officer can waive the one-year requirement. If the investigation is multi-jurisdictional and requires a reasonable extension for coordination of the involved agencies, so if it's some sort of, let's say it's a police officer gang type of an investigation and it involves several different law enforcement agencies, and it's a very complicated investigation, that could justify needing more than one year to complete the investigation and get disciplinary charges issued. If the investigation involves one or more employees and requires a reasonable extension, again, it's kind of a complexity, the investigation can drive that. Of course, if the employee, the officer, is incapacitated during the period of time, that will pause the one-year period. And if the investigation involves alleged workers' compensation fraud by the officer, after the one year has closed, and let's say a notice of proposed discipline has been issued based on whatever information was in that investigation, but new stuff is learned, new evidence is learned, there is an opportunity to reopen the disciplinary action even after the one-year timeframe has passed. And that can happen where there's significant new evidence that has been discovered and is likely to affect the outcome of the investigation. And either the evidence could not reasonably have been discovered in the normal course of the investigation without resorting to extraordinary measures by the agency. It could be something like, it wasn't apparent, the gravity of some of the misconduct, but the only way that you would have learned of it would have been to subpoena, very sensitive records, or some sort of administrative burden that just wasn't justified during the course of the initial investigation. Or the evidence was raised or discovered from the officer's response during a pre-disciplinary response or procedure, such as the SCELI hearing. So the notice of proposed discipline has been issued after the end of the investigation. The officer comes in and says, oh, well, hey, here's my extenuating circumstance, this, 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 and this. Well, the department then has an opportunity to say, well, let's, we question what you're telling us, we want to investigate that. So the officer raised his own new evidence in the case. That allows you to reopen it even after the one-year time period is closed. Now, it's important to understand that the investigation needs to be completed and the notice of proposed discipline needs to be issued, but the discipline itself doesn't have to be imposed within that one-year period, because you're gonna have the post-decisional due process avenue to go down, and that takes time. However, once the agency decides to impose discipline, the officer must be formally notified in writing of the discipline, and the data will be imposed within 30 days of the decision. That's a statutory requirement. The notice usually, again, sets out the policies violated, the conduct that constituted the violations, and the facts and evidence supporting the discipline. And then that triggers the other core protection under the POBAR, and that is the appeal rights. So the officer must receive an opportunity for an administrative appeal. That's in Government Code Section 3304. This does not apply to probationary officers. That was something we talked about before. They don't have property interest rights constitutionally, and they also don't have appeal rights under the POBAR. The POBAR does not specify exactly how the appeal process must be implemented, and it leaves the precise procedures to be formulated by the local agency. However, the appeal must be conducted consistent with due process. It must provide the officer with the opportunity to establish a formal record of the circumstances surrounding the discipline, and attempt to change the agency's decision by demonstrating the falsity of the charges or mitigating circumstances, and as generally done through an evidentiary hearing with a right to confront witnesses. The procedure must place the burden on the agency to prove just cause for the disciplinary action, if the burden is not on the police officer. It must be conducted by a neutral fact-finder, and it must be open to the public if the affected officer requests a public hearing. So when we talked about the administrative process here at Vallejo, and we talked about the Civil Service Commission avenue for an appeal, and that if the officer wants it to be, it's usually closed session unless the officer requests it be open to the public, that's in response to the statutory requirement under the POBAR. But the POBAR does not require a full evidentiary hearing for punitive actions that do not impact an officer's pay. So that would be a reprimand or a punitive transfer. Some other protections for officers under the POBAR. Searches of the officer's desk, their locker, or other personal space, their personal space in the workplace is not allowed except in the officer's presence, or with the officer's consent, or where the officer has been given advance notice, or pursuant to a search warrant. But you cannot, or the agency cannot compel an officer to consent to a search of his personal car or home, or other areas not under the agency's control. So, again, when it comes to the desk, their patrol car, other areas within the department that's under the department's control, all you have to do really is give the officer advance notice. We are going to search your desk, right? Or get his consent, or just have the officer standing there, right? There's a lot of ways that the agency can do that, but when it comes to the officer's personal items, personal car or home, that's out the window. It's gonna be either consent or a search warrant. There's protections in the POBAR for political activities. The officer cannot be prohibited from engaging in lawful political activities while off-duty and out of uniform, and also cannot be forced or coerced to engage in political activities. Another protection has to do with Brady lists. An officer cannot be subjected to a punitive action solely because the officer's name has been placed on a Brady list. A Brady list is a list that's kept by prosecutors of officers with credibility issues. It could be a variety of different things, but typically it's a sustained finding of untruthfulness. And that information has to be provided to criminal defendants if the officer that's on the Brady list is involved in the prosecution. So if the officer is being called as a witness in a criminal case against a defendant to incriminate that defendant, prosecution has to turn a list, say that that officer is on the Brady list, and here's why, so that the defendant can then say, alright, we get to cross-examine that police officer on those information, try to convince the jury, don't listen to this officer. He's been proven to be untruthful in the past, right? The mere fact that an officer is on that Brady list is not something that the officer can be disciplined for. But the officer can be disciplined and subjected to a punitive action based on the underlying conduct that got the officer placed on the Brady list to begin with, right? How is that, where could you come across something like this, where the officer is on a Brady list, and you can't, but you really can't discipline the officer? Well, let's say that underlying conduct, the agency knew about it, blew the one-year statute of limitations without completing an investigation and taking disciplinary action, now discipline for that, the discipline for that conduct is now off the table. But the fact that that conduct occurred, to the extent that it had something to do with untruthfulness or things like that, now the officer's on the Brady list. So this keeps the agency from being able to get a loophole on the one-year statute of limitations. So now we're gonna talk about personnel files. This is another core protection under the POBAR, but I saved it for last because we're gonna then transition into the confidentiality aspect of personnel files. But the POBAR doesn't make personnel files confidential, but it does have protections for the officer. And the officer has a right to inspect his or her personnel file. And personnel files under the POBAR are files that are used to determine the qualification for employment, promotion, additional compensation, or files involving any disciplinary action. It's pretty broad, but you'll see that later on, the definition for some of the other confidentiality protections that we talked about are broader. The officer can request removal or correction of any erroneous information in the personnel file. The written request with the supporting statement by the officer then becomes part of the personnel file. So if the officer says, I want to inspect my personnel file, he or she inspects the personnel file, finds something that he or she believes is erroneous, he or she can then draft up a written statement saying why this should be removed, I think this is erroneous, and that gets put into the personnel file with the offending document, assuming the offending document doesn't get pulled out. The agency then has 30 days to grant or deny the request, and a denial must include a written explanation, which also then becomes part of the personnel file. And the officer has a right to received advance notice of any adverse comments that are entered into the personnel file, and 30 days to file a written response. That also gets attached to the adverse comment. For retention and removal of disciplinary records, the records for a sustained discipline stemming from complaints made by the public remain in the personnel file for 15 years. Where the discipline is not sustained, it's five years. So again, that's for complaint, investigation stemming from a complaint made by the public. For disciplinary actions not stemming from a public complaint, the records remain in the personnel file for four years. If the discipline was sustained or modified on appeal, so it went through the Civil Service Commission or the arbitrator, the records remain for five years from the appeal decision. So we're gonna transition into confidentiality of personnel files, but this would be a good opportunity to take a pause if you have any questions about the POBAR and due process stuff that we've already talked about. Okay, I'll continue on. Okay.
Just the question on the interrogations. It says that the agency cannot create negative press, but can an officer create negative press?
Yeah. So the officer can dig him or herself into whatever holes he or she wants. We will talk about, and I think what it would come down to is if the officer decides to go public and make public statements. And we'll see this in the confidentiality of personnel files here shortly. But if the officer creates a situation by choosing to go public, well, then at that point, it wouldn't be the agency that is causing the bad press at that point, right? So what the law says is that the agency can't cause the officer who's being subject to interrogation to be subjected to the negative press and all that kind of stuff. But if the officer opens that can of worms, that's, then it's not the agency that's causing that, the officer did it to him or herself. And we'll see, like I said, we'll see here shortly in the confidentiality of personnel files where that would, how that would look. So personnel files, the parts of a peace officer's personnel, or parts of a personnel's personnel files are made confidential by statute. The personnel records that are subject to the confidentiality, or personnel records are defined by the Penal Code as any file maintained under the officer's name containing records relating to any of the following. So personal data, that's your general, like, application for employment and the stuff that's normally in a personnel file, with his education, employment history, medical history, similar information. Employee advancement, appraisals, or disciplines, so any of the disciplinary files. Complaints or investigations of complaints pertaining to the manner in which he or she performed his or her duties. So then you're looking at any of the performance evaluations, or any sort of complaint about the officer that had anything to do with his or her performance of duties. And any other information, the disclosure of which could constitute an unwarranted invasion of personnel privacy. This is a pretty expansive definition. That's a definition of what is a personnel file or a personnel record. Penal Code Section 832.7 makes personnel records pertaining to investigations and discipline stemming from public complaints, or the information obtained from these records confidential and shall not be disclosed in any criminal or civil proceeding, except by discovery pursuant to two sections of the Evidence Code. So what that sets is a default position. The default position is, if it's information about an officer stemming from the investigation of a public complaint, or it's information derived from the investigation of a public complaint, that's confidential, period. Courts have ruled this confidentiality is not limited to disclosure in criminal or civil proceedings, and the records are confidential essentially for all purposes, including public disclosure under the California Public Records Act. There are now a lot of exceptions to that. Exceptions would be if the records pertain to an incident involving the discharge of a firearm at a person by the officer. So officer-involved shooting, the investigation of that shooting is not confidential under the Penal Code 832.7. An incident involving the use of force against a person by a peace officer or a custodial officer that resulted in death or great bodily injury. So we have like a George Floyd situation, right? That is not going to be an investigation that is going to be confidential as a personnel file under that Penal Code section. A sustained finding involving a complaint that alleges unreasonable or excessive force. A sustained finding that an officer failed to intervene against another officer using force that is clearly unreasonable or excessive. And what's important here is that these are sustained findings. That means the investigation is closed, over with, and the appeals process is done. So this isn't like the first two where it's preliminary, it's just any incident involving a officer shooting his gun at somebody. This is only a sustained finding, so that means it's gonna be after the investigation. An incident in which there's a sustained finding that a peace officer engaged in sexual assault involving a member of the public. An incident within a sustained finding involving dishonesty relating to the reporting of an investigation, prosecution of a crime, or directly relating to the reporting investigation or misconduct of another peace officer. An incident with a sustained finding that a peace officer engaged in conduct including but not limited to prejudice or discrimination based on race, religious creed, color, national origin, right? So if there's an investigation and a sustained finding that a police officer was racial profiling, or in some other way engaging in discrimination... was racial profiling, or in some other way engaging in discrimination, that is not subject to the confidentiality under that Penal Code section. An incident in which there's a sustained finding that the peace officer made an unlawful arrest or conducted an unlawful search. Some other exceptions to the confidentiality of peace officer personnel files relating to complaint, investigations of complaints made by the public. Agencies can publish aggregated data, like statistics, regarding the number, type, or disposition of complaints made against their officers. So it's scrubbed of names, it's just, in this calendar year, this agency had this many complaints. Of those complaints, this is how many involved this type of action, and of those, this is how many resulted in the disposition of a sustained finding or an unsustained finding, just sanitized statistics. Agencies can release factual information concerning a disciplinary investigation if the officer or the officer's representative publicly makes a statement to the TV, radio, or newspaper that they know to be false concerning the investigation or the imposition of disciplinary action. The released information must be limited to that which specifically refute the false statements made public by the officer or the officer's representative. So what that gets back to on your question is, officer goes public, TV, radio, newspaper, I think we could say the internet, you know, the officer makes TikTok video or something like that, that's going to be going public. If they make a false, a statement that they know to be false concerning the investigation or the imposition of the disciplinary action, then the agency can go public to the extent that it's specifically refuting the false statements, right? But again, in the broader sense, though, if the, if, let's say, it's hard to get into really concrete examples, but certainly that is an area where if the agency is simply making a public statement to refute a public, a false public statement by the officer, that's certainly not going to be causing the officer to, you know, the negative press situation, to try and coerce the officer's cooperation. Once you get beyond this statutory exception, it starts to get a little tricky. But again, I think to the extent that the police officer goes public and starts making the issue him or herself, again, I think that takes, that calls into the question whether or not the agency caused any negative press, right? Now, there's the discovery exceptions that were talked about where they cited the two Evidence Codes, and one applies here to a peace officer in a municipal agency. That's Evidence Code Section 1043, and that also has some interplay with what's called a Pichus motion. The party seeking discovery of the personnel records of a police officer in a criminal or civil proceeding must file a formal motion with the court that establishes good cause for the disclosure of the records. That is essentially establishing the materiality of the records to the proceedings, and a reasonable belief, a reasonable belief that the agency has the records, right? So they have to go into court and say, Judge, there's this civil litigation or criminal proceeding happening, it involves this officer, we believe that there are records pertaining to this officer that directly relate to the material facts in this case, either in the prosecution of the defendant or his defenses, whatever it is, then they, and they have to be able to say that they think that those records are in the possession of the agency. That's establishing the good clause for disclosure of the records. Upon receipt of that motion, the agency must immediately notify the officer that the officer can, you know, find representation to mount an opposition to the motion. If the party seeking the discovery establishes good cause, the court must then review the records in camera, which is basically like the judge rules it in, reviews it in chambers, it's not in the public presence, it's not in open court where the public gets to see those records, to determine what information should be disclosed. And that is really, what information is directly relevant to an issue in the proceedings, and they'll scrub the rest. So it'll just be a limited, a limited production of information. The court may make an order to protect the officer or agency from unnecessary annoyance, embarrassment, or oppression. The court must issue an order limiting the use of the disclosed information to the court proceeding for which the information was sought and discovered. So it's not, we go into court, we get the Pichus motion, we get this derogatory information about this officer, and then we go use it for whatever other purposes we may want. It's just for the purposes of the proceeding, and the court will be on watch for any sort of abuse. So that's your typical confidentiality of peace officer personnel records, right? Recently, there's been some amendment to the law to require some disclosures to POST. POST is the Peace Officer Standardization and Training Commission. They establish all the peace officer standards statewide. They are able to do investigations of peace officer qualifications, things like that. There was an issue when we talk about all these situations, right, where there's an investigative process, there's a disciplinary process, there's an appeal process. All along the way, there are ways for the officer and the agency to come to some sort of resolution, right, that's something different than the discipline that was proposed, right? So if the discipline proposed is a termination, and throughout that process, the agency and the peace officer through his representative decides, you know what, instead of hashing this out and going down the full, the full gamut of procedural due process and the time and expense of an arbitration where nobody knows exactly how it's going to turn out, how about this? How about you let him or her resign in lieu of the termination, or retire in lieu of the termination, and let's just make this go away? Well, that, you know, raises some issues that have been a problem, right, of the idea of a problem police officer who now gets to go become somebody else's problem, right? So in 2021, Senate Bill Two was passed that mandates agencies, well, mandates POST, the Peace Officer Standardization and Training Commission, to review investigations conducted by law enforcement agencies, and POST can conduct its own investigations into misconduct that could provide grounds for suspension or revocation of a peace officer's certification, right? So the public agencies must report all complaints or allegations of serious misconduct by the peace officer. So examples of that are dishonesty, abuse of power, excessive unreasonable force, sexual assault, discrimination. All those things that we said were kind of exceptions to the peace officer personnel file confidentiality, which is a fairly recent, most of those exceptions are pretty recent as well. All of those exceptions, here's another exception, that the agency must report that complaint of misconduct to POST, and it has to do so within 10 days of receiving the allegation. And then the agency must report the final disposition of any investigation within 10 days. So the disposition of that investigation could be, the officer's decided to resign. So we no longer have jurisdiction, or whatever it is, the officer is now retired. That is the disposition, and then POST can decide to do what it needs to do with, you know, hey, this seems suspicious, or it seems like something we need to take care of, we can do our own investigation to see if we need to suspend or revoke this peace officer certification, so we cannot become somebody else's problem. Agencies must also report the separation of an officer's employment, right, resignation or termination, describe the reason for the separation, and whether the separation is part of resolving or settling any pending charge or investigation. Another thing is the agency has to report all hiring, right? So this is allowing POST to then see, oh, this officer was accused of serious misconduct, was investigated but was separated, pending the investigation of that, and now that officer's applying or being hired by this other agency, we should do some, we should look into it and do something. Any questions on the confidentiality aspect, or even the earlier POBAR stuff?
Oh, sorry. This SB Two bill, it, and correct me if I'm wrong, it appears to kind of put a little bit of weakness on POBAR with the confidentiality, I mean, the piece of it where agencies must report the misconduct of officers, to kind of strengthen, it seems to me it might have strengthened more of the community by having this bill passed by the Senate.
Well, in my view, again, what it does, so POBAR just gives procedural safeguards for imposing discipline, and that's it. And whether or not that discipline's imposed, because again, it happens all the time, right? I have explained to you that I've seen a case that was so bad that the officer's attorney, you know, threw in the towel, so to speak, and said, let's stop and see if we can resolve this, and then the agency still lost. And so throughout this process, there are a number of reasons why a settlement or some sort of resolution short of that disciplinary action would be reached, because both parties kind of go, well, we don't know how this is going to turn out, there's risks involved on both ends, but what we do know is this police officer can resign and no longer be our problem. What's, SB Two then goes into effect, and now we're out of the disciplinary proceeding, so we're out of the POBAR's grasp. POBAR is now set aside. Now we're just dealing with the agency reporting to a state commission, so a state authority, hey, this is what happened, there was an accusation, this was the disposition in a situation where the officer is separated without a final disposition on the investigation, that the investigation was pending, POST is told that, and then POST gets to do whatever it needs to do. Now, I don't think POBAR applies to POST, because POST is not the employing agency, right? So I'm not altogether clear on what the rules are for POST, and what POST has to do and establish, and what procedural rules apply for POST to suspend or decertify the police officer so that he can no longer work in California as a sworn peace officer, period. That's a different topic, and it'll probably be something that's being worked out in the courts now, because it's, I think SB Two went into effect in January 2023.
That's helpful. So you don't really, there's really no timeframe when an officer can be decertified, if I'm understanding you correctly?
I am not, I don't know what the POST procedures are for that. I just know that the agency, so Vallejo PD, if they are, if they receive a, if they receive a complaint of serious misconduct, they have 10 days to report it, and then at the completion of the investigation, they have 10 days to report that. If the investigation never gets completed because the officer separates, either resignation, retirement, or whatever, the agency has 10 days to report that, describe, you know, the reason for the person separating, and whether or not there was charges pending, and then POST gets to do what it does. But I have no, I'm not sure if there's timeframes involved or what the procedural protections are once it gets to POST.
And you also don't know if there's a penalty against the city that fails to report within a 10-day timeframe?
I'm not clear on what the, what those penalties are.
Thank you.
So I guess the Bill of Rights is silent on whether or not an interrogation has to be videotaped or not?
It doesn't have to be videotaped. Now, unless the officer asks for it to be videotaped, the POBAR says it has, the officer can insist on it being recorded. What recording that means in the ever-changing times that we have now, it's, if an officer says I want it to be videotaped, personally, I would say, well, that's a type of recording, and really, why not, right? Like, the purpose of the recording, one way or the other. And again, when I'm in the position of the investigator, I'm recording a, an interrogation with a peace officer anyways, because I just always take the most cautious approach. Because what's really important about the POBAR is that idea that it's a collateral attack on the disciplinary administrative process. So with the arbitrator or the Civil Service Commission's ruling, how they, how they find either there was just cause or there wasn't, is really hard to disturb. But if you mess up any of the procedural steps getting there, the officer can just wipe it away, depending on the egregiousness of the violation. But in an area of recording, if the officer was to say, I want it to be videotaped, I'd probably say, then fine, we're going to videotape it, I have nothing to hide, you're not going to see me do anything on the video that's going to jeopardize my investigation. Whereas if I say no, I'm going to insist on it being only on an audio recording, and then he later challenges that and convinces a judge that, you know what, it says he's, he gets his, to do a recording, I think the legislature would have intended, he gets to decide what kind of recording he gets or whatever, and now you've got a POBAR violation, a headache you didn't need. I just don't see any reason not to go ahead and just take the cautious approach and say, well, fine, you wanted to do video recording, we'll do video recording. Now, there'd be limits that I would put on that, right? If he wants to put a video camera right on the interviewer's face and something that's disruptive to the interview, I think then you can, you can draw a line and try to work things out. And I'd imagine, in a situation like that, the officer's going to have the union there, and there'd be somebody kind of to talk to, and go, hey, let's work this out so that we can get this interview done.
So if trial or fact is the correct term, is the trial or fact going with preponderance of evidence, or beyond reasonable doubt?
Preponderance of the evidence is the standard for disciplinary actions, unless, unless a collective bargaining agreement, or an MOU, or a city rule or regulation provides something different, right? So the MOU and the ordinance, or city rules or policies can establish something higher, because now then it's setting a property interest that's even higher, but the default is preponderance of the evidence, which is just 51%, right? More likely than not.
Thank you.
The burden is on the agency to get over that threshold.
So I have another question for you.
Sure.
We now know that a majority of police departments have body cameras. Is there, does POBAR that you know of have a position on that where it can be used in an investigation? Because again, that's a form of video recording. That's how I'm thinking of it.
Sure. The only way I would see POBAR implicated in a, in a, the use of a body cam is if the interrogation was being done while the body cam is on, or something like that. But then it would, I think it would just be kind of a coincidence. You know, certainly if something's happening in the peace officers, you know, in the midst of an incident, you know, or an interrogation's happening and the officer decides to turn on his body cam or something like that, I guess POBAR would theoretically protect the officer from being charged with like some sort of insubordination or something, right? He'd have the right to record it, because he has the right to record an interrogation. But the POBAR only applies during disciplinary situations, right? So it's an interrogation or the subsequent disciplinary process by the, by the employing agency. Typically, body cams are going to happen like the event that's out there. So if anything, the other way that body cam footage could be kind of implicated by POBAR is, or due process more broadly, is if there's body cam evidence that's exonerating to the officer, that would probably have to be turned over to the officer in the course of the disciplinary process, because the officer has a right to defend himself, and if, you know, if there's exculpatory body cam video that would show that officer wasn't even there, or he didn't do what they're saying he did, then that would be implicated in his due process rights to have a right to see that footage and use it in his defense.
So you've got an entire system here for discipline. Where does this body fit into the scheme of things?
That is an answer that I would have to yield to the city attorney.
Thank you. By the way, MOU is memorandum of understanding?
So I'm not, so we talked about the memorandum of understandings grievance process to the extent that it was, I think it's, I think it was Section 32J, has the appeal process for the arbitrator, appeal process, right? So that's, that is the due process that's in the MOU post-decision, and then there's pre-decision due process stuff in the IA interview section of the MOU. Outside of that, it's the Civil Service Rule 18 that governs the type of conduct. Outside of that, it's the Civil Service Rule 18 that governs the type of conduct and the, some of the appeal right stuff, the Civil Service Commission appeal right for sure. I'm not sure with things like the Skelly hearing and the written procedures for the notice of proposed discipline, I'm not sure exactly where those are found. But my understanding is you might be involved at some point in that process. I'm not for sure, but again, the city attorney would be able to speak more on that.
So as the commission's aware, we went through the ordinance itself to go through the items that this body has authority over. And I don't have the ordinance in front of me right now. I know that you don't either. But generally speaking, disciplinary actions, the investigations, et cetera, are all accessible by this body, and then this body has the right to make a recommendation up the chain. So what that means is first to the chief of police, who makes initial decisions. And then beyond that, if in fact the recommendation, opinion, whatever we're calling it right now, goes forward, then, and the chief does not follow it, the chief is bound to give an explanation to this body as to why not or what his reasoning is. And then beyond that, there is an appellate right to the city manager.
Veronica, could I just clarify? So say from, there is a complaint that comes in, POBAR gets initiated, we're governing. Do we get that information in real time or after the investigation is concluded and then we make our?
So disciplinary action comes about in more than one potential way, right? It may be initiated internally within the department. So the department takes a review of something. We have an officer-involved shooting. Those are all reviewed. We have an officer-involved weapon discharge, all reviewed. Any incident involving great bodily injury to an individual, all reviewed. So from the context of an internal generation, those all go through a specific process of either IA investigation by our professional standards division, depending on the nature of the event, or by an independent investigation. So all officer-involved shootings in this jurisdiction are by independent investigation. When that, the, this body would be notified that those were occurring, but you don't take any action until the investigation itself is concluded and there's a report, and then that process begins. Now, it's a different process or a slightly different process if all of that is initiated by a citizen complaint, which it could be, right? Potentially. So citizen complaints, as you know, under the ordinance, which I don't actually have in front of me, but I'm going to learn to bring it every time, are initiated through, they can be accepted ultimately by this body. They can frankly be accepted by a number of different departments within the city so that they don't necessarily have to go directly to the police department. But ultimately, when they are received either by this body, the police department, the city manager's office, my office, wherever that complaint comes into, then there is time bind in the ordinance as to disseminating that citizen complaint among the variety of people who have a role in the investigation of that citizen complaint. So this was one of the changes, the question of how many days if it came into the police department versus if it came into us versus it came into you. And I don't have those days in front of me. It's like two and five, I think, were the two numbers. But I'll apologize if that's not quite accurate. In any event, so those happen more immediately than those that are internally generated within the department, at least as to your understanding that a complaint has been filed. And then from there, the process becomes fairly similar, right? But you would know within those, I think it's a maximum of five days. It might be seven, but a maximum of like a week that that complaint had been filed. If it was filed with another department, if it's filed with you, then you would know immediately because within a couple of days, the secretary, once you have one of this body, would then forward them to the system of communication that will be established for communicating with the body.
So going back to the Miranda, the Miranda warning is only given if liberty is at stake. Is that correct?
Say that again. It's only given when?
Miranda warning is only given if liberty is at stake?
So the Miranda warning is required for anybody once there is a custodial interrogation that is likely to, or could possibly result in a criminal conviction. Trying to remember the word, but anytime you're having an interview, a custodial interview or interrogation of somebody and that their statements may be incriminating, that's the word I was looking for, in a criminal prosecution sense. So for purposes of an interview of a peace officer, right? It's an administrative interview. We're talking about something that's just in a disciplinary setting. But all of a sudden, information comes out that you, that sounds like, that sounds like a crime, right? Like you hear that an officer is taking bribes or something like that. And now it's a criminal situation. That would trigger a Miranda warning on anybody, though. But peace officers are people with the same constitutional, the Miranda right is a Fifth Amendment, right? Under the Constitution. So it's the same right that applies to anybody else that once they're being talked to, you know, questioned by a police officer in a custodial setting, then it triggers the Miranda rights and they get that warning. And then there's that libargar thing that we talked about that's really tricky, right? Because if there's a crime happening, you want to jeopardize the criminal proceeding by making him answer questions for your disciplinary action. It's something that needs to be seriously considered before whatever course of action is taken.
Through the chair, Josh, if you don't mind, just getting a little bit closer to the mic, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Can you, I know you mentioned libargar in your PowerPoint presentation, but you want to expand on what that is?
Well, it's just, it's named after a case, but it's just a warning that's given to the officer that you explain to the officer that you will be disciplined if you don't answer my question, right? So you give them the Miranda first. An officer knows if he's getting a Miranda, his Miranda or her Miranda rights read, that's a criminal situation, right? So once the Miranda part is done, then the libargar admonishment is given, and that is, "You've been given your Miranda rights. I am requiring you to answer these questions. If you do not answer these questions, you are subject to discipline for not answering these questions." And then if the officer, the question did answer, then the officer answers. Okay, great. You got your answers, but now you can't use those answers against the officer or any of the evidence derived from those answers in the criminal prosecution. So it's very tricky. Anytime an officer is being read Miranda rights in a disciplinary interview, it's generally a time to timeout and figure out, what do we want to do? How do we want to approach this? Things like that.
And remember that the flip side of that, however, isn't true. So while we can, we as the organization conducting the administrative investigation can compel the officer to answer against penalty of discipline, which is what was just discussed, it can only be used in that administrative investigation, but it can be used there. So the criminal piece of it peels off, can't be used by, let's look at it two different ways. The department has the administrative investigation and the outcome of an administrative investigation, discipline, no discipline, or what have you. The district attorney's office, or in some cases, the Department of Justice, has the criminal portion of that investigation and the criminal charges that could come out of it. We can use the compelled statements. They can't, if that helps to sort of frame that.
How many discipline cases happen a year in Vallejo Police Department, if you know?
That's probably a question better given to the chief, who doesn't have to be, happen to be here this evening, and he does apologize for that. We did not realize that we had set your training session on top of a cab meeting. So our apologies, and we will try not to ever do that again. And our apologies to the department for doing that. It was, this was the date everybody could make, and we didn't pay enough attention to the fact that there was a cab meeting tonight. He can answer that question for you, because I only know about the ones that reach a certain level, if that makes sense. So there are only certain ones that would come over where I would be aware, where the city manager would be aware, where the human resources department would be aware, because there's a whole built-in process for that. But if you're asking sort of like total number, they could range from things like somebody didn't give their name when asked, as a for instance. There's a policy relating to that issue, and an officer's asked his name by someone, and he doesn't answer, doesn't give it, walks away, whatever it is. So there could be something there where there would be a written reprimand or a discussion. And again, there's a disciplinary matrix. If you look on the department's website, you can kind of see what those policies are. I don't remember, and the city manager might be able to help me. The department puts out some aggregated statistics, but you talked about the aggregated statistics issue and the question about relating to whether that is publishable, where peace officer personnel records are not. Aggregated statistics can be publishable, but when you get to a really small department, which unfortunately we kind of are at the moment, you have to be careful about your aggregated statistics making, being able to be identified as a specific peace officer as opposed to just aggregated statistics. If I'm in the city and county of Los Angeles or San Francisco, likely you can't figure out who that is. But if I'm in a department where you have 20 officers and you have one a year, and I put out an aggregated statistic of one, everybody is going to know what that outcome in disciplinary action is and that it relates to a specific officer's personnel file. So we're kind of in the middle right now because we're not fully staffed. So it makes some of those statistics a little more difficult. But I think overall, just how many disciplines a year of all levels, you can, we can probably get that information from the chief.
What about on a broader scale and outside of the Vallejo Police Department? Are like POBAR violations cited often by officers who are seeking to get out of disciplinary interrogations? Is that something that? And what are the common POBAR violations that are cited by officers? You know, not getting proper notice of interrogations, things like that?
Yeah, at least a lot of times what you'll see is things like the notice of discipline was deficient. It didn't have enough information for the officer to figure out exactly what am I being accused of? What is the evidence against me? I mean, all of this stuff is to just make the system, is designed to make the system more transparent, but it does offer a lot of ways to make a mess of things. But each, each one of those core components, right? Interrogations, I think there's like three statutes that cover interrogations. I think the appeals process is 3304. What lawyers do is we go into a thing called Westlaw. We can pull up the statute. And then for each statute, there's a thing called, like the list of decisions, right? That involve that statute. And for each one of those things, with POBAR, it's hundreds. I mean, there is so much POBAR litigation. It's almost impossible to delineate the fine contours of each everything, because a lot of it's situational dependent. A lot of it is just really process-driven lawyer stuff. But typically, what you're going to get is a deficient notice of what they're being charged with and what the evidence is, or if something's withheld from them, or if you blow a deadline. If you're only, if you have 10 days to do this, or you have one year to do that and you miss the boat, that's it, generally speaking. Not every POBAR violation derails everything, right? There's a sliding scale of how serious is the POBAR violation and what are the remedies for it, right? But generally speaking, because it is one way to have the officer just be able to just destroy the disciplinary action, no matter how righteous it is, you just have to be very, very careful going down all of those things. And then what it ends up being is, you know, in a situation where everything seems so apparent, like what this guy did or what this gal did is so egregious, like certainly we don't have to wait around for all this, you know, process and stuff. Well, yeah, you do. You have to do everything very methodically, by the book, record things even if the officer's not asking for it or whatever it is. You schedule the interviews at the time that he's, he and/or his representatives are available. Why are we giving them, you know, three weeks to set this interview? Well, there's always a balancing act going down all of these processes on, we don't want to have a judge decide we violated this officer's rights and then could potentially derail the whole thing. But at the same time, it's designed to just make sure there's a fairness in the process for the officer, knowing that sometimes when something happens and a complaint gets made public or something, and there's the, you know, somebody wants ahead, then there's a danger that the officer's rights, you know, an officer can get kind of thrown on the bus. And so it's meant to balance those two things out. And it's not perfect, right? But generally speaking, it's always best to just take the cautious approach, follow the POBAR. Don't cut corners, right? It's just like even when police are investigating crimes and, you know, there's situations, "Well, should I read the Miranda or should I not read the Miranda?" Just read the Miranda, because if you read the Miranda, you're good, right? It's only when you don't do it that now that can become an issue.
I have a question. So in your opinion, do you think it's good for a city's HR department to be thoroughly aware of POBAR based on what you just gave us today? Because I mean, as you just said, you have to be, make sure all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. Because I know sometimes it's just eternal affairs, but in some cases, HR is usually involved somewhere in the process.
Yeah, it all depends on to what extent they're involved, if at all. Like in the situations that I've been involved with, they were not all that involved. Usually it would be, whatever involvement they have would be ministerial, right? Like, here's the disciplinary action. It's cleared its way through the appeals process. Put it in this personnel file, and that's what HR does. Doc the pay for the time that he was on suspension. That's what HR does. But typically speaking, and Ms. Neb can correct me if I'm wrong in Vallejo's instance, but HR isn't intimately involved with the investigative aspects that the POBAR covers. That's usually going to be either internal, the department IA, then the department leadership, city attorney, you know, his legal counsel, or an outside investigator. Sometimes HR will help in getting the outside investigator or maybe advising on whether an outside investigator is warranted. But typically speaking, I don't think HR gets involved in a lot of the things that the POBAR governs.
And I'll just mention, that's true, and it distinguishes the police department from other city departments. For complaints against employees in most other city departments, the HR department and the city attorney's office do play the key role in executing the investigations, working on, supporting the departments in disciplinary hearings. But because there are so many specific requirements and procedures of public safety officers, that's really primarily handled by the police department. Other departments don't have their own internal affairs to do internal investigations and all of that. So to Commissioner Sykes's point, yeah, for, HR really does play a leading role in investigations and discipline in most other departments, not so much in the police department.
The one exception was under the MOU for written reprimands. If the officer, you know, the third party neutral to hear the appeal of the written reprimand starts at somebody in the department that the officer and the department can agree upon, but if the officer objects and says, "I don't want it to be anybody in the department," it goes to an HR representative. That would be an instance where there's an HR person involved in a POBAR-implicated procedure on the discipline.
And my second question is, how many police officers, if you know, And my second question is, how many police officers, if you know, in the Bay Area have been decertified under SB 2?
That I, I do not know at all.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that.
Okay, does that conclude all of your questions or any other? Is there any member of the public who would like to ask a question?
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Currently do not have any members of the public with their hands raised. However, uh, council member, um, Gordon, um, has been able to log in and she's been watching on Zoom.
Great. Okay. So, um, we will, but no hand, no raised hands online?
No, no raised hands at this time.
Okay. Thank you. And seeing none in the audience, then, uh, we, okay. Dawn's equipment and I are, it's a little too sophisticated over here for me. I don't usually get the comms power here. Um, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, um, which actually is future agenda items. So as the commission knows, we're trying to get, um, all of your trainings moving along as, uh, as quickly as we can. So you should anticipate, um, that next month, we will have at least one, if not two, trainings next month. Do any of you have any specific dates that I can share with our city clerk that are not available? Nope, nothing? Anyone? No? Oh, you're looking yours up. Okay.
Just on some Thursdays, I'm not available. Um, and the first few Tuesdays in the month of April. But usually there's a conflict because council.
Okay, yeah, the, the, well, the first Tuesday would be a council conflict, so that one would probably never get set. But you're also not available the second Tuesday of the month? Is that what you just said?
Yeah, I, after the, probably, well, yeah.
Okay. Oh, actually, the second Tuesday's the council meeting, I'm sorry. So also the first Tuesday, which is, also happens to be a council meeting. So that's not happening. Um, and then no Thursday is what you're saying? Correct?
There are a few.
Preferable.
Yeah, but Mondays or Wednesdays are fine for me.
Okay, so try to stay off Thursdays.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think I might be unavailable Thursday, the, April 4th, I suppose it is, and April 10th, maybe, if that's a Thursday. Thursday nights for, for a little while may not be great. I, I probably won't be busy, but I might be.
Okay. Well, it sounds like Thursdays are not ideal for more than one member, so we don't wanna force more people to have to go back and watch tapes. That would not be ideal. So, all right, then, um, nobody else going once? No? Okay, perfect. So, um, we will, um, again, be looking to get some additional assistance with presenters as we have for your last two. With regard to that, as we get those confirmed, uh, we will reach out and let you know with as much advance notice as we can, um, bearing in mind the items or the dates that you've asked us to try to stay away from. Um, and Dawn will probably reach out to pull you for some dates, uh, once we have those available, uh, which should be in the next, you know, week or so that we would have those available.
Do we know what our upcoming, uh, training subjects are, or is that kind of depending on who we're able to contract?
Exactly. You got it. Yeah, exactly. So it's a little bit of availability. We have kind of an idea of the order that we were hoping to do some of them in because there is a bit of a flow there. But to the extent that we, um, wanna bring somebody in that would be really good for that topic, we wanna make sure, obviously, I guess that's obvious, that, um, they're available for that date. So they've moved around a little bit here from what we initially assumed. Not a whole lot. We've stayed kind of fairly true to the order we initially, um, thought about, but, um, we do have to reach out to some additional people and see who's available on what dates. We'll try to let you know as soon as possible. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Um, with that, we stand adjourned at 7:50. Thank you all.